It is 6:00 PM and we will call to order the City of Crescent City Regular Meeting for September 18th, 2017. And if you would please call the roll.
Councilmember Greenow?
Here.
Councilmember Keim?
Here.
Councilmember Follman?
Here.
Pro Tem Short?
Here.
Mayor Enscore?
I am here. Would you please stand and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance? And begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We have nothing to report out of closed session, so we will move on into public comment. Any member of the audience is invited to address the City Council on any matter that is within the jurisdiction of the City of Crescent City. Comments of public interest or on matters appearing on the agenda are accepted. No, however, the Council is not able to undertake extended discussion or act on non-agendized items. Such items can be referred to staff for appropriate action, which may include being placed on a future agenda. All comments should be directed at the entire Council and need to be at the microphone or will be considered out of order. After receiving recognition from myself, please state your name and your city or county residency for the record, and try to limit your public comment to three minutes. We'll also provide additional three minutes to discuss any agendized item. Do we have any general public comment this evening? Yes, please come up here, please.
Hello, Dan.
Hi.
So, I'm Mark Spence from San Francisco, Louisiana. So, September 1st, I'm on the bicycle and all this stuff stolen. I was out exploring through here and I gave some suggestions. First want to say, so I'm riding on myself and just off the point, give thanks to the Lord God, the Almighty Creator. On the bicycle that was stolen, I was able to travel through most of the United States. I live in the lower seas and then I've bet my Indian economy of 30,000 people and in town of about 6,500 people. I'm kind of a market bull that's hard to be, don't have more knowledge. Not just about myself, but in general, that thieves are a field of games. You just run a shop, do whatever you want. So, it's a bit confusing to me. I do understand that there's a lot of nature how to dispel from down a lot of these trails and it is a bit of a task, but even if I was a toll or shared department, I find that a lot of disinterest. Nobody even asks for a picture of the bicycle or of what I put property out on the bicycle. I'm actually a victim of my Indian because of this, this exposure to the bicycle, which actually harbors, is all I care because of the use of the bike all the time. So, I talk about solutions, putting up signs to people that come through everywhere, giving places where I've stolen from. I actually got to meet this felony suspect, but I understood that I'm not allowed to go through him. And I actually watched him in action. I actually watched him case in the face and it was a bit of how the police come out. The call wasn't made as a stat that the person said it's an unauthorized, so that was very problematic to make that way up. So, another way is cameras. I know it can be expensive maybe, but select areas have cameras. But the other thing is, I don't find people in Crescent City with great ideas and finding surveillance, but then they're able to have people listen, they're able to actually view the surveillance. And the time goes by, so like the last time I've seen a camera is this day, but then nobody's able to look at it because I don't have to enable the authorities to look at it. Then I'm not able to get anybody to look at it. So, there is another way, but nothing happens. And then if I'm not here, I'm not being paid, as he frankly will in my particular case. I mean, I was already injured on the first. I'm done. But other people get this dangerous person out of there and he says he's just a middle man. He didn't know who I was, but he was gone. So, and another thing, we did some tracking things that you might see that are available. I don't know, maybe you don't want to throw all these people to the show for being tellers, but if you were to leave things up. And I'm available if you want to put on that. I've also worked in healthcare with homeless and trans and people, not say they're thieves, but people that have certain element that might do those kind of things. Plus, I'm a bicycle expert. Going on with reason I'm here is to make positive progress because I definitely am making a report because this is I am overrated. So, and congratulations to the police office.
Thank you. All right. Do you have any more public comment? Yes, Bill?
Thank you for your laugh. I appreciate it. And then just wanted to give you an update because of you, we are actually in business and attempting to change everything in the face of our community as Coastal Cap Company. And we appreciate the opportunity to do that. But our latest announcement is that on the 14th, that we acquired Comfort Cap Company sole in its entirety in name, likeness, vehicle, and permit status. So, therefore, we're hopeful and excited about the expansion. So, I just wanted to share that. And thank you all again for your participation because without you, I would not be standing here trying to serve our community and enjoying this business. Thank you.
Thanks, Bill. We certainly appreciate the good work you guys are doing. Good news. All right. Any other general public comment this evening? Okay, seeing no more general public comment, we'll close public comment. And we will go on to reports and presentations. We have a new staff member to introduce. Mr. Young, are you taking responsibility for that? Mr. Weir, are you taking responsibility for that? Or are we just going to let her introduce herself? Okay, so they're just jumping at the normal. I'm really sorry, Nikki. Most of the time, we're really excited about having new people, but these two look like we're pulling teeth here. Golly sakes.
There we go. Well, thank you, Mayor, for that lovely introduction. Yeah, so it is my honor to introduce you all, as well as the community, to Nicole Sutterfield. Nicole goes by Nikki, but she is an engineering graduate from Chico State University, and she has started with us as our engineering project manager. So, normally in these situations, you would like to take somebody on where they're sort of new to the engineering field and they're gaining their experience. You'd like to give them one project at a time. Well, in Crescent City, we have the opportunity to give her several projects. So, at this point, in our first hour, we introduced her to the Sunset Circle, and then we moved on to our Storm drain improvement project, our Pebble Beach project, our elevated tank project, our How Drive Coastal Trail project, as well as some of the other projects that we have as well. So, we loaded her plate right off the back. And I'd like to say that she has brought a very positive, hardworking attitude to the department so far in taking all of these projects on. And we're just excited to have her, and she'll help us get through all these projects.
Good deal. All right. Nikki, would you like to say something?
I just want to say thank you. I'm really excited to be here and just really excited to be a part of the community.
All right. Welcome. Thank you so much.
And I just want to say, Nikki, I walked into City Hall the other day and absolutely everybody was gone. I don't know what happened, but everybody was gone. And Nikki was in there, excellent customer service, helping some couple. I think they were just off the, you know, street. And you just jumped right up and helped them, and I was really excited.
Good deal.
Very proud moment.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Welcome. All right, we'll move on to the consent calendar. We have several items on here. We have the regular council meeting minutes, actually from the special meeting on September 5th, the warrants claim list for August 26th through September 8th, payroll report for September 2nd through September 8th, the budget to actual for August 2017, and then a resolution 2017-35 to authorize the interim city manager to accept a deed conveying the real property. That's the Bank of America. Do we have any public comment upon anything that's on our consent agenda? Seeing no public comment, we'll bring it back to the council for action.
Move to approve consent.
I have a motion to approve. Do I have a second?
Seconded.
Have a motion and a second. Would you please pull the vote?
Councilmember Keim?
Yes.
Councilmember Greenow?
Yes.
Councilmember Follman?
Yes.
Pro Tem Short?
Yes.
Mayor Enscore?
Yes, very good. We'll move on ceremonial items. We have swearing in of a new police officer. Chief? And Kimmy, City Clerk?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, fellow council members. As a chief, there's a few ceremonial things that I love to do, and this is one of them. So, it gives me great pleasure to introduce our newest officer. He's grown up here in Crescent City and down North County, so he knows just about everybody. So, with him tonight with Officer Tyler Bolsh is his parents, his extended family, and his new extended family. So, Mr. Mayor, council members, please welcome Tyler. Come on up, Tyler.
I, Tyler Bolsh.
I, Tyler Bolsh.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
Or affirm.
Or affirm.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith.
That I will bear true faith.
And allegiance.
And allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And to the Constitution of the State of California.
And to the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well.
And that I will well.
And faithfully discharge.
And faithfully discharge.
The duties upon which.
The duties upon which.
I'm a volunteer.
I'm a volunteer.
All right, Tyler, would you like to say a few words?
I just wanted to say thank you for giving me this opportunity to help protect and serve our community. It's a real honor. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Welcome. All right, we will move on with our agenda. The next item is under public hearings, and we are going to first adjourn to the Housing Authority. We'll call to order and dispense a roll call. All members are present. We have three items on the consent agenda. The Housing Authority meeting minutes from September 5th, warrant claims for August 26th through September 8th, and the resolution HA 2017-02 to admin the administrative plan, chapters eight and 17, which we introduced and looked at last meeting. Do I have any public comment on the items on the consent agenda for the Housing Authority? Seeing none, we'll close public comment, and I'll bring it back to the authority for action.
Move to approve this consent also.
I have a motion to approve. Do I have a second?
Seconded.
Have a motion and a second. Would you please pull the vote?
Boardmember Keim?
Yes.
Boardmember Follman?
Yes.
Boardmember Greenow?
Yes.
Vice Chair Short?
Yes.
Chair Enscore?
Yes, very good. We will, we have no other items for the Housing Authority, so we will adjourn from the Housing Authority. We do not need to go to the successor agency because we do not have any items. We have no continuing business, but we do have a couple of new business items. The first being a concern regarding Pacific Terrace Manor and sewer charges. Mr. Young?
City Attorney is going to explain this a bit, although I've had conversations with the tenants there. Basically, the concern is that they have been charged by the landlords at Pacific Terrace for water and sewer service. They believe in excess of what is costing the owners, and there's an attempt to pass that through to them, potentially contrary to mobile home rental laws. And they've requested that the city pass an ordinance that would prohibit the pass-through or the resale of water and sewer services beyond the original customer from the city. And Martha can discuss this in more detail.
Okay. Thank you. Ms. Rice?
I believe some of the mobile home park residents have contacted legal aid, and I had a conversation with Ms. Jan Turner regarding what the issue was and what possible remedies the tenants currently have, as well as, you know, what they were asking from the city. And as I explained in the staff report, it does appear that the tenants currently have a remedy for this illegal charge. However, if there, if it happened that they did not prevail, they could face attorney's fees because that particular law provides that any prevailing party has attorney's fees for tenants that are already, you know, on maybe a low income scale. That threat is significant and would create a great hardship if it was to come to fruition. So, they've requested some assistance from the city and that it would be possible for the city to pass an ordinance which would not allow landlords to basically make a profit off of our utilities. So, the proposed ordinance, although not written yet, in theory, what it would do is require that landlords of residential properties only pass through the actual cost of the water and sewer utilities to their tenants. This then creates a remedy by either the city can act by citing them through a municipal code violation, or California law gives citizens a private right of action for municipal code violations as well if they're an aggrieved party. So, this way, they could have a small claims suit or other suit without risking the threat of attorney's fees.
Okay. Thank you. Counsel, do you have any questions for our legal counsel regarding this?
Do they not have the option to take them to small claims now?
They can, they can go to court, but under the mobile home residency law, the party, the prevailing party is entitled to its attorney's fees. So, this mobile home park is managed by a management company. They've got a law firm out of San Francisco that's representing them. And since there's not a case directly on point to this precise, exact issue, you know, there's no guarantee. So...
I understand if they collectively took them to court, then they would have the attorney fees question out there. Is there not a case for small claims that would eliminate that possibility? As you said, there's already a remedy in place. I just kind of wonder if the city should be getting into this.
There is a remedy in that they can sue. It depends on, I don't know precisely who owns the property, but even having your, you can still be awarded attorney's fees if they're doing work on the case, even if they can't necessarily show up. I'm not sure. I think that legal aid would have been willing to represent them. And, you know, in a limited civil case, it wouldn't be a small claims, but a limited civil case. But the problem is there's always that threat of attorney's fees, which is what is allegedly, you know, preventing them from pursuing that. So, yes, there is a remedy, but there's something that is preventing them.
No avenue for small claims?
You mean for a single individual?
Individual, small claims?
A single individual, yes. But the, like I'm saying, the mobile home residency law that they would be suing under provides that the prevailing party can get attorney's fees. And if they want to have an attorney represent them, such as legal aid, then they'd have to go through a limited civil case.
I see. Thank you.
Any other questions, counsel? From my vantage point, the idea that a mobile home park or a, any kind of landlord where there's tenancies involved, the idea of somebody being able to profit off of our utility is simply unacceptable from a residential standpoint. And I think that your question is, is a good question. Should the city be getting into this? And I think absolutely we do from a residential standpoint, because somebody should not be profiting off of, we have a hard enough time making ends meet when it comes to our utilities and making sure that we have the resources necessary to pay for these things. We go to our constituents with asking them about the potential of rates having to go up to try to make sure that we're making ends meet and taking care of the system. And the idea that there's somebody else out there, a management firm or a property owner, who's then jacking up rates and charging more than we do is just unacceptable. And I think that from a resident basis only, we need an ordinance in place to protect against this. I don't think that from a commercial standpoint, there may be other scenarios commercially where we have a water user who's passing that on something, or somebody's, you know, bottling crystal clear Crescent City water or something, and they make a money. I don't know what that could be. But from a standpoint of people who are residential, nobody should be charged more than what that landlord or property management company is paying from us. So, that's my take. I think we need to have staff get involved in trying to craft an ordinance to protect our rate payers, even if that is, they're not paying the actual rate because it's impacting them.
I would make the same comment. We're not even permitted to make a profit. We have to maintain our utilities at a break even. And that's the struggle, as you said, that we have of being able to generate enough revenue to operate it. And we can't make a profit, so why should we hire somebody else? And part of what's happened in this case also, specific to this particular case, is that with any rate increases, they have alluded, more than alluded to, they've been telling the tenants, at least so they have told me in my discussions, is that they're blaming the city for the rate increase, and it's going to them. They said, well, the city raised the rates, and that's why I'm raising the rates on you. And what they've done is now charging the individual tenants the water and sewer charge for a single-family home, where previously, and others will maybe do it on strictly a pro-rata basis. Now, they take their whole bill and pro-rate it between 38 units if there's that. And that's a fair enough thing if they're putting it through. But they're paying at a lower rate in the sense of consumptive rate, which generally ends up coming lower with the, particularly on the sewer, on a consumptive rate, but yet then charging them the flat rate that is on the homes. And in some cases, at least the tenants have alluded to increases in their so-called utility bill from the landlord of nine and 10 times of what they were previously paying. So, but they can speak to that. I'm sure there's a couple of people here that probably want to speak to that. But it's also, besides them trying to make a profit, they're also using us as their scapegoat.
Well, yeah, considering that from a sewer standpoint only, rates haven't changed since 2014. So, to imply that somehow the city has jacked up your rates to them is disingenuous at best. So, okay, counsel, anything else from up here? Otherwise?
One other question from Ms. Rice. Will this, let's say we do get this in the municipal code, would it truly be a remedy for them? Does it work retroactively?
It wouldn't go backwards. No, it would not be retroactive, but it would prevent, you know, as soon as this is effective, so say 60 days from now approximately, at that time, the practice would have to stop. Those utility charges would have to line up with what the city's actually charging the landlord.
So, this won't help them get a refund on what they've been overcharged?
Correct.
But we can still deal with the problem?
Correct.
Very good. Thank you.
Okay. If we don't have anything else, we can come back here in a minute. Let's go ahead and open up for public comment. I'm sure that somebody would like to share about this.
Testing month. My name's Dale Morgan, and I live at Pacific Terrace Manor. We got, yeah, we got a letter late last year that said that the city had jacked up its prices. They didn't say jacked up. They raised their prices and that they were passing it on recently is what they said. They recently raised their prices, so they were passing it on. And so, we got like $72 right then that I billed as attitude. So, now we're paying almost $500 just to sit on that property. And so, it is sort of like, they wrote in this like sneaky misleading language, like, yeah, well, the city's, you know, and all the stuff about the pass-through and all that is, I've read this thing about five times. I still don't understand it. But I know that it was deceptive and that all we really want is fair treatment. And it sounds like we may get it. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Morgan.
My name is Miriam Feld, and I've lived
My name is Miriam Feld, and I've lived in Pacific Manor since 2006. I'm 77 years old, and my neighbor is in her mid-80s. And both of us are quite disturbed about this because we're on a fixed income. And like, I was speaking with my neighbor the other day, and she said she wants to die in her home, but she doesn't know if she'll be able to. I know that I have had real estate agents look at my place, and they say, you can't sell it because they're charging such a high rent. Now, the problem is, is even though you roll back the sewage, this person, store's management, can raise the rent to whatever he wants. And when I first moved in, only two people were allowed in the trailers to live. And now, I guess you could have 10, 15, 20, or however many you want in there, which would make it a nice slump, but would make a nice profit for stores' management. And as I said before, I wanted to die in my home, and I know that my neighbor said she can't save money to even get a deposit to go into a retirement home, because everything has to go for the, either fixing things that go wrong or paying the rent. And I do know that when that rent increase came around, I had bought hearing aids for myself. And when the rent increase came around, I had to turn them back because I couldn't pay for the hearing aids and the rent increase. So I just want you to know that it's not just a problem with the water passage. This store has indicated that he just wants to make money, and because he can raise the rent to whatever he wants, we kind of expect that he's going to double our base of $399 to maybe $800 once we win this. So I'm not sure what's going to happen, but I do want to bring that up to the city, that it's more of a problem than we think. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi. My name's Marsha, and I live with Dale at Pacific Terrace Manor. We moved in there three years ago and bought our house there. You just pay rent there, so it's a mobile home park, obviously. And when we moved in, you know, we thought, well, this is pretty good, you know, it was reasonable, they charged rent, and we were prepared that it's going to have rent raised, you know, everybody knows that, you know. They did raise it, and, you know, we thought it was reasonable enough to live there, but last year in October, they sent us this letter, and then suddenly, it was going to be another $100, $72.21 in addition to the base fees that they charged. In the letter, they said, "The city recently raised its rates." And we thought, well, okay, maybe they did, you know, I just sort of accepted it. And so, but we went down to the city, Dale and I did, and asked, "Did you raise your rates recently?" And they said, "No." But they didn't want to talk about it right then. But we thought, well, no, this doesn't sound right, because, you know, store's management is telling us that the city raised its rates, and we're going to pass this on to you. And we thought, well, this, and then other people started talking in the park, like, what? You know, this is too much. It's just kind of an outrageous amount, you know? And then suddenly, when we find out it's, yeah, blaming the city, you know, saying, well, it's the city, and we're just passing that on to you. So we just didn't think it was right. I'm a client of the attorney of Legal Aid, and, yeah, she explained it in her letter, pretty much. It's hard for us to explain it because it's so complicated. Basically, we think they're just passing on illegal pass-through of charges, so that's all.
All right. Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
My name's Kelly Houston. I've lived in Pacific Terrace Manor since 2013, and I just wanted to also address that store's management, since we have lived there, has also bought, I believe it's Spruce Haven Mobile Home Park out by the casino, and also the Shanger Law across the street. So it's not just really protecting Pacific Terrace Manor, they're also doing the same thing with all of the properties that they're buying. So it would also be protecting the whole, lots of other families. So, thank you.
Thank you for sharing that. Okay.
My name's Joey Akris. I'd like to appreciate, let you guys know that we appreciate you guys listening. And, yeah, so we've been going through this with this company. We've been having battles with them over a lot of things, whether it's we are to maintain their property, if there's a tree that's a dangerous tree that's getting ready to fall, we're in charge of getting, paying for it to get cut down. So the water issue, it affects more our residents like Miriam, not so much us, but, you know, we don't think it's right. So we just all came in to say thank you for taking the matter up, and hopefully, we can put an end to it. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Any other public comment? Okay. We'll close public comment, and we'll bring it back to the council. Then, council, anybody, members have any other questions or comments regarding this? Legal have anything else? Martha, you have anything else you want to add? Okay. Then I think by, if we have consensus on behalf of the council, I would like to direct staff to begin working on this at the quickest available time. We'd really like to see something back soon on behalf of the residents, especially as was brought up, that there is a likelihood that there are others who are, if they have not faced this reality, they may be facing it soon. So I don't want this to linger, so the sooner we can get this ordinance in place for us to see, since we, it will take two meetings for us to get it enacted, I'd like to see it quick as possible.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, October's doable.
Okay.
Yeah.
That'd be awesome.
I just had a couple of quick questions. Is there any way we can get in touch with the property manager and tell him to stop doing this, like, stop misleading our residents? Is there anything we can do there? I mean, I don't think we can do a cease and desist order, but at least put him on notice that we know that he's misleading people. And also, I think we should just let the residents know as well that we didn't increase sewer rates. So if there's any, if you don't know that by now, we didn't increase rates. Tell your neighbors.
Hopefully, they would spread the word in their neighborhood, that if you wanted, we could send a letter or something to all the tenants, or they might, if we give them the name, we have the name, but the address of the management company, just send them a letter that we don't appreciate being...
Misrepresented?
Misrepresented in the manner in which they have been doing with the water sewer rates, suggesting that we are the reason that these increases are taking place.
Yeah.
And that's probably the best we could do. The ordinance will take care of itself in time.
Right.
I have a letter that requires you to water and store. This is required, you need official water.
Let me make a copy of that. Let me make a copy of that. Okay? Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Fallman. I think that any, and Mr. Young, it may be appropriate that we get the contact information and send them an official letter saying we do not appreciate them misrepresenting the city, and in fact, that we are, that we are looking at an official remedy, and that our hope would be that they would...
Conduct their business ethically.
Conduct their business in our community in a way that is, that is fair and ethical. Okay. Well, I want to tell you all, we very much appreciate you coming and bringing this to our attention, and we certainly are going to do our very best to address this. I am concerned about the issue of, we address this, and then the management company finds another way just to give you 90 days' notice and raise your rent $72. But that's a different process, but hopefully, we can at least address this and ensure that they are doing what they're doing legally and ethically. So, but we appreciate very much you bringing it to our attention. Okay? Thank you. We will move on into our, where's the...
Our list of proposed local street projects for the Road Repair and Accountability Act of 2017.
Oh, wow. We've got a... Mr. Weir.
Yes, Mr. Weir.
And a 500-page PowerPoint.
No, there will be. I can pretty well assure that.
So unfortunately, I do not have a PowerPoint tonight to share. Nikki, take note, there will be no 500-page PowerPoint presentation. You guys are going to have to envision this one without a PowerPoint, unfortunately, tonight.
But you do have something to put up on the screen.
I do not.
We have something in front of the screen on it for us.
You put what on it?
Yeah. Just... Look at there.
Excellent. So, yes, there we go. We have the, we have the project list. So what is, what's before you tonight is a resolution which would amend the 2017-18 budget to incorporate the list of projects, which has been so readily made available by our, by our clerk, Kimmy Scott, so everyone can see the project list, which is excellent. The, so a little background on this. In April of this year, Governor Brown signed Senate Bill 1, which is known as the Road Repair and Accountability Act of 2017, better known now as SB 1. SB 1 is a bill that basically is designed to address the basic road maintenance and critical safety needs of the highway system and local streets. The road maintenance rehabilitation account, otherwise known as the RMRA, is eligible to local cities and counties. The, each city and county gets their own appropriation of funds that will be given to it. So Crescent City for the fiscal year 1718 is set to receive $43,148 of funding this year, and the next year, we're set to receive $129,543. There'll be future funding as well, but those appropriations aren't known, as it's based off gas tax. And so, they don't come out with the exact amounts until the years prior to, prior to those funds being distributed. However, in order to get the funding, each city and county must submit to the California Transportation Commission a project list of the local streets and roads in which you intend to work on. So that's part of the whole act, is they want the cities and counties to identify these projects in which that money would then go to. The two projects in which is before the council tonight, one of which is the Front Street Road Repair and Storm Drain Project, which council has recently heard about, and this is our CDVG project. So each project, as it goes through its various stages, you have, first, you have your soft cost, which is a lot of your pre-engineering, pre-construction type costs, that's your engineering, some of your survey work, any environmental type work that would go into it. So what we're proposing to do with the money that's incorporated in this year's budget is to actually use that for the soft costs of our Front Street project. When you look at Crescent City's list of roads, Front Street is obviously one of the most critical roads, and it's a road that we really don't have a plan to try to fund as far as the repair goes, other than the CDVG. In order to get the CDVG funds, we need to have project plans that are at 30%, 40%. In this year's budget, we do have some money budgeted for storm drain repair, consulting time, as well as staff time to work on it. So we'll be able to take the money that was in the budget, which we've also accounted for, this $43,000 already in our revenue side of the budget, we'll put it towards this project, which was the plan as far as the budget goes. As far as the K Street project, which is the next project that we have on this list, that's a project that we're wanting to get going. So again, it'll be to cover the soft costs of that project. It's K Street in between Front Street and Second Street. It's right in front of the national park, right adjacent to the library parking lot. If anybody's driven that recently, it's getting worse and worse. And unfortunately, it's a local road. It's a local road that is simply just that, it's not a collector's street, it's not a major collector's street. So the road rehabilitation on that couldn't be funded through RSTP or any of those type of state-funded, state-funded type transportation projects. That's where we can use this money for the local roads on that. So hopefully, we'll come up with a design, we'll do some of the initial investigation on that, and then we'll look at this project in next year's budget as well. Once we have that final design, we'll know more about the construction costs. Obviously, the Front Street project that we've talked about is about a $4.1 million project, so obviously, the $43,129 doesn't come anywhere close to covering those costs. That's where we want to couple this with CDVG funding to actually get a construction project out of it. Our K Street project, depending on what the condition of the utilities are, could be upwards of about $300,000 to $400,000. So again, that project is a bigger project than what this funding allows, although this funding will allow us to get to that point, that we can then either save this money up for a couple of years to try to fund it, or we could combine it with another funding source.
Okay. Do you have any questions regarding this?
You just mentioned very briefly the funding, so would be eligible to apply again in a couple of years, or next, whenever we'd be eligible again to apply for some more money?
So, yeah, so this really money, it's not really money that you apply for. Every city and county is automatically eligible for it, and we get our allocation. We just need to submit the project list to them, and then they will appropriate the money to us.
Okay. That's not a guaranteed $130,000 every year, though?
No.
Or so. Okay, that can fluctuate.
No, that can fluctuate.
Okay. Thank you.
I just have a question, and maybe Ms. Lieber can answer this. Is the money that we're tapping into here from SB 1, is that the only revenue stream through SB 1? Because when SB 1 came out, when I saw the initial projections of revenue to counties, I thought the projection was higher than this. Maybe you could just mention that.
Yeah, yes, Mr. Mayor. SB 1 actually included a couple of different revenue sources, but this particular source, the RMRA fund, has to have the project list. The other sources don't have to have a project list.
Okay, so there's other SB 1 money that we're going to be able to draw from?
Yes.
Isn't that that total amount for next year, someplace around $200,000?
Yes.
Okay, good. I just want to make sure that somehow they've made this great promise, if we support SB 1 for transportation dollars, you can, this is the kind of funding you're going to get, and now that the governor signs it, now that we're way up here away from everybody, oh, by the way, you're getting $40,000 now.
No. This year is, the total is around $50,000 or so, because it's only going to be a partial year, but then next year, yeah, it is the full funding.
Okay, great. Very much. Thank you. Okay, anybody else have any questions?
I'll make a quick comment. I think Eric mentioned it, but basically, as you've known before, the F Street drainage project is one that we need to get out early, and this would be the money, and we can't use the block grant money until the program has been approved. These monies would be used to cover those soft costs, that we can have plans and specifications to hit the street running right after the first of the year, once we know the block grant money is coming. One other point, if for some reason, let's say next year during the budget, you determine that K Street wasn't the highest priority, you can amend this project list with the California Transportation Commission. But I think it's one that needs to be done, but, you know, who knows what it's going to look like six, eight months from now. If that's the case, you do have the option to amend it, to change it to another project, if a better one or a more worthy one came along.
Okay. All right. Anybody else have any questions, comments? Okay. Do you have any public comment? Mr. Chairman, welcome.
I feel it wouldn't be right not to come in and speak to you, Mr. Mayor. The, just a quick bit of warning, maybe the city manager could follow up on with the League of Cities. Last week, while in Sacramento, we received some word concerning SB 1 and a potential repeal based on quote-unquote "a tax assessment." And California State Association counties suggested at that time that those communities, cities, counties that were receiving funds potentially brace for impact if the appeal or repeal worked out specifically on a tax-driven item. And the question quickly became, if it did go into effect, and if it did pass, then they were suggesting the communities that did expend those funds, that wouldn't be retroactive, however, get the funds expended as quickly as possible. That was the suggestion. So I'm not sure if you have the ability... So, I'm not sure if you have the ability to follow up with the League of Cities, but I know it's a big concern on the radar screen for CSAC.
Well, just a question, Chris. Was CSAC's opinion that there would be an ask for that money back or simply if this was repealed?
A repeal, of a repeal and specifically expend the funds that you receive now quickly.
Okay, good. That's a good piece of information. Thank you so much for sharing that. Okay, well, we need to follow up with the League of Cities and see.
That was a discussion that was, came up while I was at conference and they basically said the same thing that Chairman Howard said. If you get these funds expended as quickly as possible.
With that bit of information, then, are these projects, I mean, obviously, it's tough to be put on the spot with this, are these projects that we can begin this work on in an expeditious manner to try to expend? Because we may only get the one year, if that happened. We would only be talking about the Storm Drain Improvement Project, not K Street. So, is it something we can do quickly?
We've already started on it. They were out surveying today.
That's pretty quick.
They started on it today. So, yes, it's intended to be on it. Like I said, we've already started.
Good. All right. Good, good information. Thank you. Thank you, Jason. All right. So we have a, we have any other public comment? All right. Close public comment, we'll bring it back. We do have a resolution 2017-36 to amend the budget to incorporate a list of projects funded by SB 1, the Road Repair and Accountability Act.
I move we adopt Resolution Number 2017-36, a resolution amending the 2017-18 budget to incorporate a list of projects funded by SB 1, the Road Repair and Accountability Act.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Would you please pull the vote?
Councilmember Keim?
Yes.
Councilmember Follman?
Yes.
Councilmember Moreno?
Yes.
Pro Tem Short?
Yes.
Mayor Ensor?
Yes, very good. All right, we have come to the end of our agenda. Do we have, well, we just addressed one of the legislative matters. Do we have any other legislative matters? Anything that you brought back from the annual League of Cities Conference that would be beneficial for us to know about from a legislative standpoint?
Just that they were working on a housing package, I think it was SB 1, no, no, SB 3 and SB 4, that they were working on the night we were about to leave on the 15th. I heard that they passed those bills and they were going to the governor's desk. Whether he signs them or not, I don't think he's done it yet. They also had concern over SB 649, I think it was, concerning the small cell towers.
Cell towers.
It did pass, unfortunately, while we were there and it's going to the governor's desk as well. So, I don't have anything else concerning legislation.
Do you have, you want to go ahead and just jump into any other reporting that you may have?
While I was at the League of California Cities Conference, an expo over September 13th and the 15th, it was a pretty good conference. I went to several different sessions, the Coastal Cities Issues Group, another one entitled "Who Has Our Tax Dollars Now?", was very enlightening on the tax code and the tax system in California. I also went to a Crisis Management for Cities Conference, as well as another one entitled "Who Really Controls California's Water?". It was really interesting and insightful. That's only a few of the things that I went to, but we, I also went to the General Resolutions Committee meeting and they decided to pass two resolutions, one concerning public safety and they're going to go back, the League of Cities is going to go back to the table with the governor and the legislature and try to see if they can get them to come back to the table as far as AB 109, Prop 47, and Prop 57 concerning the early release of inmates from prison to cities and counties. They want them to revise the way that they release them in that they would take into account the entire criminal record of a person and their mental health status instead of just the last crime that they committed. So they're gonna try and get them to change that. We also passed a resolution concerning the contracting of services between cities and counties, dealing with fire and police, just giving more leeway to cities to do that. That's it for me.
All right. Very good. Councilmember Keim?
I attended a Border Coast Regional Airport Authority meeting and that was good. We're gonna move forward with some new airline
Essential Air Service proposals?
Proposals, yes.
We got two?
Thank you. So that's exciting news. I also attended a Del Norte Local Transportation Commission meeting and I played softball with the city.
Yes, you did. And you did a fantastic job. I was very proud of you.
Let's just say I'm not really an athlete.
You did great.
Not really, but that was fun, I have to say. Thank you for inviting me, Kimmy. It was entertaining. Nothing else.
Do you have a, do we know when the companies that are gonna be Boutique Air and Great Lakes Airlines, when they're going to be coming to do their proposals?
Um...
Do we have a date set yet?
I'm not sure we have a date set. We might. No? I don't think so. I don't think we have a date yet, but I'll let you know.
Well, I'm hoping that we can, when they're here, I know the last time they made themselves available for meetings, I think it would be good to actually have them come here and present, just as they do with the airport authority and with the Board of Supervisors. Obviously, we've got lots of questions because we need to have the service.
Well, and the city and county both have buy-ins.
Yeah.
You know, for the terminal, so.
Okay.
We need to make sure that we get a good carrier in here.
Absolutely. All right.
But there's some good news as far as flying north and south, so.
Good.
In the proposals.
Good. All right. Mr. Follman?
I joined Councilwoman Keim at the Del Norte Local Transportation Commission meeting on the 13th. Couple of things to note from there is that we will be having a public meeting on October 18th for last chance grade, and I didn't catch the time and place for that meeting, but I'm sure I can provide that.
I think you're still up in the air.
Yeah, I think so.
Last chance grade.
Last chance grades, yeah. Elk Valley, the crossing did not meet signal requirements, there just wasn't enough, you know, traffic collisions there or near collisions to warrant a signal there. So, be careful if you're driving home on 199 tonight.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Sherrard?
I also attended the Del Norte Local Transportation Commission. Another thing to be taken from that meeting is thank you to Caltrans and Tamara Layton. She did, she persevered in getting them to bring up an underwater torch and remove some construction debris out of the Smith River near the Hiuchi Bridge. Piece of rebar that looked pretty dangerous, pretty scary looking, and also another piece of cable that's from past construction of some type, but thank you to Caltrans for getting that out of there and Tamara for championing that. Also, even though we've talked about it before, as you're traveling south, you can see Caltrans surveyors working on our south entrance to the city, looking for that calming construction project to begin soon, hopefully. And that's all I have, sir.
All right. Very good. I had a variety of meetings with constituents and then some committee meetings. I think that one of the meetings that I had that was really encouraging today, met with the county and with the Parks Service, and we will see this coming year, the Downtown Information Center, the Parks Conservancy is planning to keep that open year-round and since that's been something that our community has certainly weighed in on and has said that that's important to us, I'm just very, very pleased that the, both the state and the National Park Service have heard us and are willing to work with us and I think that's a great positive, positive thing and give them kudos for being able to work with us for that. I would, in parking today, I guess as opposed to talking about other things maybe I've done, I came across something that I know about and I've seen and I've experienced, but that my concern was raised to a higher level today and that is the parking lot in front of the library. And it's been a while since I've driven through there in a car. I normally drive through in my truck and I don't worry about the possibility of ripping off my muffler in my four-by-four truck, but I was in my wife's car and I knew that if I ripped off her muffler, you'd be looking for a new mayor for a lot of reasons. You may need to look for a new mayor anyway, but that's not the point. The point is, is we have gone beyond, in my opinion, and I'm not an expert by any means, but we've gone beyond inconvenience, needs to be fixed, ought to look at this, to, this is now a safety issue. Somebody's car is gonna get damaged simply trying to drive through there. Somebody's gonna fall. We can't, I know that the city council did not allocate budgetary resources to address this. I'll take responsibility for that, that I should have had this on my radar and we should have budgeted, but this is not something that I feel like we can just say, hey, we need to look at this next year. If we have a senior citizen park and go to walk through the library and falls and breaks their hip, next year isn't gonna cut it. We will feel the ramifications for that for long-term. We've gotta do something. And so, Mr. Young, I would very much appreciate it if staff could look at some options and report back to us post haste on this. I don't know how we will pay for it, but this is just not something that we can just ignore. And with the numbers of people that are going down through there, with the farmer's market every Wednesday, we are coming into a period of time where the farmer's market will be ending and we will have, even though it's winter time, we will have some timeframe possibly to do some work where we don't have as much pressure on that parking lot and I would just like if we had consensus on the part of the council for staff to really look hard at some possible solutions, both immediate as well as long-term. So, if we have consensus up here, I'd like for us to direct staff to start looking at that. You okay with that?
I'm not sure without allocating funds to push toward that project that would do much. I think city staff is probably taking quite a hard look at that area under that cedar that's been ripping up the roadway there for a long time, but without any revenue to do anything about it, I wonder if what we're asking them to do is fruitful. I completely agree with you that something needs to be done there in that parking lot with that big cedar, but I don't know if what we're doing here
The K, the K Street Storm Drain? I mean, it's right there in Front Street. I mean, what, 25 feet to the left is the parking lot?
This is something we can look at and probably report back in the next council meeting or two, at least some preliminary ideas of what can be done. The problem is, is this Monterey Cypress there have been lifting up the pavement and complicating that is they're designated as landmark trees in our ordinance, ones that were to be protected, but there may be solutions to protect them and take care of that, but that's something Eric and I and others can take a look at and maybe, if not the next council meeting, maybe the one after, at least give you a preliminary report. I don't know if we can have cost figures at that point, but at least maybe some of the options that might be available. It's been a problem for years and, you know, it's just sort of, nobody wants to do anything with the trees and it hasn't bubbled to the top of the priority. It sounds like it just did.
Well, it did for me today and I go through there fairly regularly, but I had not been through there in a car and it was significantly different when I drove through there in a car versus in my truck. And I just don't want to see one of our citizens end up injured because we are worried about, well, maybe we don't have the money for it. My experience is, is that when things become health and safety issues, you need to find the money, not is there money or it's not in the budget. This is becoming a safety issue. I don't think we should have people driving through there as it is. I really don't. I don't think people should be walking through there. After driving through there today, my opinion was, that should be roped off. It's not safe. It's not safe for a senior citizen to have to walk across that park and not walk through there. And so, maybe we need to reallocate some funds. Maybe the hard question is the council needs to say, well, then where are you gonna take the money from? So maybe that's part of what I'm asking too. If we have to move the money to deal with something that I think is a health and safety issue, then I'd like some input on maybe how we can do that. So, okay. All right. Anybody else? All right, we will stand adjourned until October 2nd. Thank you.